Good morning, I'm Kristi Zukovich. Welcome to the October 31 Sedgwick County Commission Meeting. We're glad you're joining us this morning. We like to take this time to let you know about activities going on around Sedgwick County. And first off, to remind you, coming up at Intrust Bank Arena, we do have Wichita Thunder Hockey in action on November 2nd and 4th. We also have Aerosmith on November 11th, and we have Batman Live November 13th through the 14th. We'd also remind you at the Sedgwick County Zoo that winter hours begin on November 1st, and that means that the zoo is open from 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. And of course, every Wednesday through the winter, it's Winter Wednesdays, which means that your admission is just $2. Of course, you can find out more information about activities at the zoo at our website at sedgewickcounty.org. We would remind you that the Commission will not be meeting on November 7th or the 14th. We do have some other business to take care of those days. Commissioners will be attending the Kansas Association of Counties Conference, but we will have a special meeting on Friday, November 9th. And this meeting will be at 11:00 a.m. It'll be here in our chambers. We will not be live on KPTC, but we will be filming the meeting, and we will have it available via streaming video on our website after the meeting concludes. On today's agenda, Commissioner, we have lots of proclamations today. We have World Freedom Day, Child Grief Awareness Day, Wichita JROTC Leadership Week, Diabetes Awareness Day, and Salvation Army Kettle Kickoff. We'll also have presentation of career development certificates. We have a number of citizen inquiries. We have the Quarterly Financial Report, Exploration Place Report, CJCC Report. So lots and lots of business today. So Chairman Norton, I bet you can get the meeting underway for us, and we can get some of these items clicked off.
I certainly can. I would like to start off with the thought of the day, as I have done. A happy life is just a string of happy moments, but most people don't allow the happy moment because they're so busy trying to get a happy life. And that comes from Abraham Hicks. Thought of the day. I'll call to order the meeting of October 31st, the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, call the first item.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ransah.
Present.
Commissioner Skelton.
Present.
Chairman Norton.
Item J, we're starting a conversation again about fluoridation. And before, I'll set the stage again. We do have an individual here that is from out of town. I think it's Paul Connet. And we'll offer him 10 minutes today as the expert, just like we did. We'll let everybody else have three minutes, as we did before, to get, so we can get through that. And I will also offer, like we did last time, anybody that has just come and showed up, we'll give them three minutes, so that we have everybody's voice heard today. If that's the, that'll be the protocol we'll follow. We'll try to follow, stay close to three minutes on anybody, but we will offer Dr. Connet 10 minutes, if that is appropriate with everybody. So we're gonna move on. Mark?
Yes, good morning. My name is Mark Eaton. I'm from here in Wichita, Kansas, 5575 South Mosley. And I would like to sincerely thank the Chairman of the County Commission, Tim Norton, for being so gracious in listening to us and in just now opening it up to other people to speak, whether they're on the agenda or not. And I'm here for two purposes this morning. Number one is to formally make a request, which I have put in writing, and I have handed the entire formal request to your Assistant Kristi over here. And I will verbalize part of that here, but in the interest of time, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. My second reason for being here this morning is to introduce not one, but two very prominent scientists in the field of fluoridation. That is Dr. Paul Connet, who traveled from New York to be here with you this morning, and Dr. Albert Bergstaller from Lawrence, Kansas, who is the internationally recognized fluoride expert, who is the editor of the journal Fluoride. So you have in front of you here this morning on this front row, you have the most expertise that you will probably ever have in your life on the issue of fluoride. And I don't need to remind you, you already know this, that community health is something that the County Commission takes a very active role in. Even though you're not the city, and this is a city fluoridation issue, you guys still have a lot to do with community health. You have a lot of power and authority in what you're gonna do. And this issue, which I thought three months ago was a non-issue, is extremely important. And I think we have a situation where the science has gone way far ahead of public opinion, and these two gentlemen are on the cutting edge, and they can bring you up to date on the modern science. And we have to avoid situations like what we had with lead in gasoline, where it took us years to get rid of it when we knew it was harming us. And we need to look at the recent science, we need to look at the facts, we need to not polarize. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and read the portion of the request that I need to read to you. This, of course, is referring to the fact sheet that was published and distributed prior to October 9th. And by the way, I wanna again thank you Commissioners for responding and for taking that down from the website and for not publishing that. The request is the KRA and the Wichitaans opposed to fluoridation hereby request that the County Commissioners publish a suitable correction in the Wichita Eagle or in any other media resource to correct the damage and misinformation that was done by the distribution of the error-prone so-called fact sheet. So all we're asking is, in whatever way you find acceptable, is that you make correction to that fact sheet. I've also given Kristi a fact sheet from our perspective, and these have been very carefully vetted. Thank you very much for listening to me this morning. God bless you.
Thank you, Mark. You're welcome. Madam Clerk, call the next.
Item K, request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding fluoridation.
Mr. Chairman, just a procedural pointer. Can we do a receive and file after all the testimony we get today, for all the testimony, as opposed to doing one for each person who testified?
I think that would be appropriate. It would certainly move the meeting along today, so that would be...
That's my suggestion.
If it's okay with everybody at the bench, that we do one large receive and file. Okay.
No, they're all receiving.
Doctor, go ahead.
Let me say how thrilled I am to be at this meeting. I've been really touched by these declarations that you've gone through, and I get a very, very positive image of Wichita, its public servants and the citizens in this beautiful town. And I'd just like to spend a few minutes talking about my concerns about water fluoridation. I've spent the last 16 years of my life studying this issue. I didn't want it. I studied it first as a professor of chemistry specializing in environmental chemistry and toxicology, and now as the director of the Fluoride Action Network. The culmination of 14 years of this research produced this book, The Case Against Fluoride, with two other co-authors. It's understated, not overstated, it's backed up with 80 pages of references to the scientific literature. And the sad thing is, there has been no scientific response to our book from the promoters of fluoridation, and yet they still continue to state again and again and again that fluoridation is safe and effective. It is neither. Twelve arguments. I'll summarize these arguments, and I hope the clock will allow me to go into some more details at the end. Fluoride is not a nutrient, and it's not necessary for healthy teeth. The level used in our water, approximately one part per million, is not small. It's 250 times the level in mother's milk. Fluoridation is a very poor medical practice. Once you put medicine in the water, you can't control the dose, you can't control who gets it. It goes to the very young, the very old, the sick, poor, nourished, and so on. Fluoridation violates the individual's right to informed consent to medication. This morning, you celebrated World Freedom Day, and I can't think of a more precious freedom than our ability to determine what medicines that we put into our body. People dying for our freedoms, this is an important freedom, and it should not be thrown away lightly, whether it's the majority or whether it's just a group of counselors. Fine, fluoride does not work systemically. There's no biological process in the body that needs fluoride, none at all. It works topically on the outside of the tooth, and it defies common sense then to swallow it. If you swallow it, you expose all the tissues in the body that don't need it and may be harmed by it. And by putting it in the water, you're also forcing it on people that don't want it. You can solve both the medical problem and the ethical problem simply by encouraging people to buy universally available fluoridated toothpaste and spreading it on their teeth and spitting it out, not by putting it in the water. Six, the evidence of benefit is very weak. I was surprised at this, but you'll find three chapters in our book going through how weak the evidence is that fluoridation actually works. And it's not surprising when you know that the mechanism is topical. Dental ferrosis rates show that American kids are being overexposed to fluoride. In fact, the latest report from the Center of Disease Control says that 41% of children 12 to 15 have some form of dental ferrosis. Remember, when they started this practice, they thought they could limit it to 10% of children in the very mild form, but we now have 8.6% in the mild form and 3.6% of the moderate and severe forms. There are many other health concerns, particularly fluoride's interaction with the brain. I hope I can have time to go through some of the details on that. Nine, there's not an adequate margin of safety to protect everyone in society from the endpoints which have been thoroughly discussed by the report by the National Research Council from 2006, which I gave testimony before in person. The promotion of fluoridation is not scientific. Eleven, most countries do not fluoridate their water, including 97% of Europe, yet their children's teeth are as good as countries that do. Wichita should not be rushed into this outdated practice and should instead remain with some of the most famous cities in the world that do not fluoridate their water. There was an article in the Wichita Eagle, or rather editorial, that was trying to intimate, suggest that Wichita was somehow behind the times, that they should join up with the other cities in America that fluoridate. But actually, you're in the mainstream. Look at the towns, some of the famous cities that do not fluoridate their water. Amsterdam, Athens, Belgrade, Berlin, Bologna, Barn, Brussels, Cambridge, Cardiff, Copenhagen, Edinburgh. In fact, you can choose almost any town in Europe and in Japan, and they don't fluoridate their water. So you're in very good company right now. Here are the countries in Europe that do not fluoridate their water. Some of those countries, four of them, Austria, France, Germany, and Switzerland fluoridate their salt, but the majority neither fluoridate their water nor their salt, and fluoridation of salt allows the citizens some freedom of choice. And here, according to the World Health Organization, is the data on tooth decay in 18 different countries, 13 of which are not fluoridated, one is 10% fluoridation, four fluoridate, including the United States. You can see that tooth decay is coming down as rapidly in the non-fluoridated countries as the fluoridated ones. And if you look at the tooth decay in the 2000s, at the end of those graphs, you see it's a wash. You cannot tell the difference whether you're looking at a 12-year-old that's grown up in a fluoridated country or a non-fluoridated country. I urge you strongly to watch a 29-minute videotape called Professional Perspectives on Water Fluoridation. Fifteen scientists are involved in that videotape. Three actually were part of the National Research Council report, two are former employees of the EPA, myself, and a Nobel Prize winner, and several dentists that were once pro-fluoridation are now against it. So I'm not the only professional out there that's against fluoridation. Our webpage has an enormous amount of research material. You can read about 10 facts on fluoride, 50 reasons to oppose fluoridation. But for many people, the big reason is government has no right to force citizens to take medicine. And the argument that you can simply determine whether you drink the water or not is just does not hold for families of low income. They cannot afford avoidance measures. Since October 25, 2010, fluoridation has been stopped in over 70 communities in Canada, the United States, and New Zealand, and I hope that Wichita, under the circumstances, does not go against this trend. About 3 million people have been liberated from fluoridation in the last couple of years. Now, just a few more details, which is useful when we got a screen. This is the Center of Disease Control report. Those bars represent the percentage of children that have dental ferrosis, and you can see it's going up. The green bars are from the period 99 to 2004. So 28.5% of children age 12 to 15 have very mild dental ferrosis, 8.6% have mild, which affects 50% of the tooth surface, and 3.6 moderate or severe. This is what it looks like. This is very mild. This is mild, affecting up to 50% of the tooth surface, and this is moderate or severe. Now, my concern is this, that when fluoride is causing this condition, which is not denied, but is visible, what is it doing to the rest of the body, which you cannot see and for which you have to do careful studies? And in particular, I'm concerned about what it means when a young baby is exposed to fluoride at 250 times the level in mother's milk, which is the reason, incidentally, that Arvid Carlsen, who led the fight against fluoridation in Sweden, used, for one of his main arguments, he was concerned about what fluoride would do to the developing brain. Well, since that time, there've been over 100 animal experiments that shows that fluoride can enter the brain, change biochemistry, change behavior, and cause other kinds of damage. One study was remarkable, that one part per million rats, given one part per million of fluoride in their water, after a year, developed kidney damage, brain damage, greater uptake of aluminum into the brain, and beta amyloid deposits, which are thought to be a marker for Alzheimer's disease. A very serious study. Human studies, there've now been 34 published studies from India, China, mainly China, India, Iran, and Mexico, indicated that moderate exposure to fluoride is associated with lowered IQ in children. This study particularly concerns me, or interests me, because I went to the Chinese villages where the study was made. They compared the IQ of children in a village of less than .7 parts per million in their water with a village that was between 2.5 and 4.5 parts per million. Otherwise, the cities were, the villages were remarkably similar in terms of lifestyle, diet, etc. They controlled for lead exposure and iodine exposure. They found a drop of 5 to 10 IQ points between the two sets of children, and the whole IQ curve was shifted over, which is very significant. But what you're seeing there is a drop in the number of very bright children, your geniuses, and increase. Thank you very much. The threshold for this effect, 1.9 parts per million, offers no margin of safety to protect all children in the United States. One, there's a huge range of sensitivity to any toxic substance, you need a safety factor of 10. And secondly, if you just take the simple notion that children are drinking different quantities of water, a child in America drinking 2 liters of water at one part per million is gonna get a higher dose of fluoride than a child in these Chinese studies drinking 1 liter of water at 1.9 parts per million. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. We have a couple of questions. Mr. Skelton.
Doctor, thank you for coming down this morning, and I find many of your points interesting. I don't want you to go into a great detail here, but I have a question for you, and it has to do with your opinion on the health effects of genetically modified organisms, antibiotics used in food supply, and, you know, hormones and other chemicals used in meat processing. Do you have an opinion on that also?
I absolutely do. I think it's another example of man's enormous arrogance, and nature has produced a pretty good system in terms of growing food and what goes in in our bodies. And usually, when we make these major interventions, we live to regret it. I think altering genes and putting them out into the environment, organisms and putting them into the environment, is the most outrageous example of arrogance. You will not see a mouse making love to a strawberry, and there are fairly good reasons for that. I'm hoping that Proposition 37, which requires labeling of genetically modified organisms in California, will pass on November 6th, and if it does, I think it sounds the death knell for genetically, and certainly for Monsanto's efforts to impose this practice on the world. So very strongly against it.
Okay, you mentioned that study in China, and I can also comment, there was a study done also on, you know, China's an interesting place because it has a highly diverse and indigenous populations that are, some of them are isolated, and some of them are near urban centers, and they compared the diets of Chinese also, and they did find a correlation in intelligence and rates of cancer, diabetes, and pulmonary cardio disorders among populations that were accessing genetically modified organisms with hormones and antibiotics and other nasty chemicals used in the production of these food animals versus the diet of the rural indigenous populations that were growing natural foods and such. So there are studies out there, and I find that interesting you bring it up into regarding fluoride. Now, I also have a concern about this. So now, you know, we have, I think science in the future is gonna come around, and the majority of science is gonna back your position. It's what I believe in now. I think there is something unnatural going on. We have stories in the newspaper and on the media lately about how boys are entering puberty at a younger age, and one of the hypotheses is the hormones that are used. You know, I get aggravated when I hear about this, because it is more unknown chemicals put into our food and water supply. So not only are we gonna be exposed to a, you know, a highly abnormal animal product for food, we're gonna be having water now that is tainted with chemicals. So, you know, my whole philosophy here is pureness. You know, I wish I could play a few quotes from the movie Doctor Strangelove right now, but I'm not gonna go there, but purity. All right, so I appreciate your comments today, and I wanted to thank you, and I just wanted to share some of my concerns with you and hear your reaction. So thank you, sir.
Can I just quickly just respond to that? Because I think you've raised a very important issue. One of the first things I learned in 1996, when I first got involved and I didn't want the issue, was the level of fluoride in mother's milk. And when I discovered how low it was, I just could not believe that nature had made such a fundamental mistake with the baby's first meal, if indeed fluoride was necessary for teeth or for anything else. And the whole notion that a group of dentists in Chicago know more about what the baby needs than nature herself is just preposterous, in my view.
Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had a prior engagement, wasn't able to be here when we had the earlier discussion, and so some of the questions that I would have liked to have asked at that time, I'm going to try and ask some today, so I hope you'll bear with me a little bit.
Absolutely.
Because the county's website, I had a lot of problems with the fact that our health department put up information that was incomplete, in my view, highly misleading, in the fact that the federal government has recently lowered the level. Now, you mentioned one part per million, but my recollection, and maybe I'm wrong on this, and maybe it's because of the amount per a certain volume of liquid, I'm thinking they, the federal level had been, I think it was 11 parts per million per liter, and had been dropped to seven parts per million per liter.
No, no.
Could you clarify?
Yes, I certainly...
Could you clarify those numbers for me, please?
Certainly will. There are two, there are two numbers that are important here. One, you have the EPA's Safe Drinking Water Standard for Fluoride of four parts per million, and that, I think, many people think is far too high, and the National Research Council recommended in 2006 that that level should be lowered for a number of health reasons. Now, the other number is the recommended level that we add fluoride to the water to lower tooth decay. And that range is .7 to 1.2 parts per million. And this was the number that was changed, or rather, a recommendation was made on January 7th, 2011, where there was a press conference between the EPA on the one hand and the Department of Health and Human Services on the other hand, and essentially, they were responding to these huge increases in dental ferrosis. And so their concern is, continues to try to lower tooth decay without getting too much dental ferrosis. They deny any other major health concerns. But in order to protect against dental ferrosis, they are now recommending that we drop the range and we come down to .7 parts per million as the recommended level to add if people are going to add. Some communities around the country have already adopted .7, but it has not been finalized. It's still open for public input, this recommendation.
Well, let me ask you the reverse side of that equation. My understanding is the water in Wichita has a natural background level of fluoride of about 3.3 is what I recall.
.3, .3.
3.3?
Yeah.
In your opinion, fluoride being a naturally occurring element, my understanding is, is that we all have some amount of it in our systems. Is that amount excessive? Is it a risk or a health hazard at that level? Or is it basically something that, it varies a little bit depending upon where you live in the country, assuming that man hasn't intervened in adding it? And where do we, is this a safe level, in your opinion?
I think that we're going to find that, as we learn more about fluoride, especially its impact on the brain, that .3 is gonna be too high. And we're gonna be in the same situation as with arsenic. Arsenic occurs naturally in certain states in the mid, in the West. They're having to spend money to remove the arsenic. That may happen with fluoride as well. Back in 1939, the American Waterworks Association recommended a level of .1 as the safe level. So it's unfortunate. As far as natural levels are concerned, I think nature has given the guideline. Nature has told us what level is safe for a baby. It's .004 parts per million. It would cost a fortune to get everybody down to that level. But what we must do right now, I think, common sense says, you don't make the situation worse by deliberately adding fluoride to the water. So .3, I don't think it would sound huge alarm bells right now until people have thoroughly, thoroughly vetted all these IQ studies and other, other studies. So I don't think there's gonna be a kind of... So, I don't think there's going to be a kind of panic, but don't make the situation worse by adding to it.
Well, let me ask you this. I've heard some of the proponents of fluoridation make the assertion that one cannot get enough fluoride as a coating on your teeth to be able to have the positive effects from a dental point of view. Are there any studies out there that have addressed this question that you're aware of?
No, I think that's wishful thinking on their part. I think that has more to do with public relations than it has to do with any kind of scientific, peer-reviewed, and published study. As we know, the major benefit of fluoride, if any exists at all, is topical. It works on the surface of the teeth, and therefore, it just doesn't make sense to be swallowing it and putting it in the drinking water.
Well, I was very unhappy with our Health Department when they put up the information. Their, in my view, it was error by omission. They didn't point out the data that you had provided, that the federal government had reduced the recommended level, and rather dramatically, over 40%, just within the last two years. The question I'd have for you is, have you reviewed what material had been up on the county website? And if there were any other significant errors of factor or errors of omission that were included in that data that the county did have up there? Because this was a very strong concern on my part, because the fact that we did not include the fact that the federal government had dramatically lowered their standards raised some alarm bells for this, Commissioner. And I, my solution for this is not to take information down, but to give everybody an opportunity to speak, get the information out there, and have an informed public discussion.
Commissioner, I'm not familiar with all the details. I have seen the leaflet that was distributed, the statement, the factual fact sheet that was distributed. And there certainly were serious errors in those facts. And I know that Mark has done his best to clarify what those mistakes were. I think there's a more serious general problem here. And that is with the health system in this country, there's like a chain of command. So, what is determined at the center is passed down from, say, the Center of Disease Control to each health department and to the oral health directors and so on, and then down to local health boards. And it's a brave soul in this bureaucracy who challenges policy. They don't see their job as investigating the science, scientific underpinning of these policies. They leave that to the center. They leave that to the people in Washington or Atlanta. Their job, as they see it, is to carry out policy. And the Center of Disease Control has made it very clear that they promote fluoridation. And so, they're carrying out the, essentially, the instructions of the Center of Disease Control. Now, the problem with this is that we're not talking about the 20,000 people that work in Atlanta, Georgia, who have an enormous range of medical expertise, risk assessment expertise, et cetera. We are talking about one small section of the CDC called the Oral Health Division. And that consists of only 30 people. And they are dentally trained. And their mission is to promote fluoridation. So, unfortunately, I do not believe they're objective in terms of analyzing whether this practice is, whether the science supporting this practice is sound, on the one hand. And certainly, they're not equipped to objectively and accurately review the health, the health studies that I've been working with and we've published. It could be done. The Center of Disease Control could have one division of dentists that truly believes in water fluoridation and goes out and promotes it, but only if you have another division at the CDC, which is independent of the promotion activities, and instead focuses entirely on the science. And that's what I believe civil servants should be doing, giving politicians and decision-makers the objective science and not spinning it. And unfortunately, I'm afraid, I'm sorry to say this, and there's nothing personal about this, but I'm afraid that many of these local health officers in Canada, in Australia, in New Zealand are spinning the message because that's what they believe, that their masters in the ministries of health and the Department of Health and Human Service want from them, promotion of a policy. And for some of them, sad again to say, I think for them, protecting this policy has now become more important than protecting the health of the American people. And that is a pretty shocking thing to say, and it's a pretty sad thing to say.
Let me ask you one last question. Fluoride as a naturally occurring element.
Yes.
If it is ingested and brought in, do you have any scientific knowledge in terms of what it may serve to substitute for in terms of other elements? If it's, if excessive amounts come into the body? Because I'm thinking also at a second level, sometimes a basic element can have a form, I'm thinking of chromium, for instance. There's different types of forms of chromium, and some are benign and some are not. And I was curious in terms of, from a fluoride point of view, how it falls in terms of, from your expertise on that.
I'm fascinated that you chose that example. My PhD thesis was on the toxicity of chromium 6. So, I'm very, very familiar with that. And in the process of pursuing that thesis, my interest was on mechanisms, mechanisms of action. How is it that chromium 6 causes cancer? How is it that chromium 6 is so toxic, whereas chromium 3 is not toxic and not carcinogenic? And what does fluoride do when it gets into the body? So, what we know is that no one has ever demonstrated that fluoride is necessary. It's not an essential nutrient. And there's a very set procedure to determine if something's a nutrient, essential nutrient. You starve the animal of the suspected nutrient in its diet. And if it's a nutrient, then the animal would develop a disease like scurvy or berry berry or something like that. And that's how we found out about vitamins. They've never done that for fluoride. And I'm not aware of any biochemical mechanism, biological biochemical molecule that needs fluoride for its normal action. In fact, the first opponents of fluoride in this country were biochemists, particularly biochemists in Wisconsin. And they were appalled at the notion of putting fluoride in the drinking water because they had used fluoride to inhibit enzymes. And enzymes carry out all the chemistry in the body. And you don't want to put a toxic substance in there, interferes with enzymes. In terms of interactions with other substances, which I think your question was aiming at, one thing which is particularly problematic is that fluoride causes, forms complexes with every metal ion in the periodic table except the alkali metals, lithium, sodium, potassium, rubidium. All the rest, fluoride surrounds these positive centers and forms these complex ions with a new identity, new reactions. And these metal ions are at the center of important biology. They are the center of enzymes, at the active center. Metal ions are involved in neurotransmission and many other functions. And not only can they then interfere with the normal calcium mechanisms, normal calcium is a regulator in neurotransmission, so you can interfere with that, but you can, it can also form complexes with toxic metals like aluminium and lead and get these metal ions into places they otherwise wouldn't go. If you remember, I referred to the study by Varna, which gave rats one part per million fluoride. And they found that it increased the uptake of aluminium into the brain. So, the fluoride is forming a complex with the aluminium. And whilst the aluminium iron, which is highly charged positively, can't get across the blood-brain barrier, apparently, other complexes of aluminium can get across the membrane. And this is very, very serious indeed. The other interaction, which is complicated, but obviously there, is the interaction between fluoride and iodine. As you know, we need iodine in thyroid hormones. And scientists in the '30s, '40s, and '50s in Argentina, France, and Germany used to give patients with hyperthyroidism, overactive thyroid, they gave them fluoride tablets to lower the activity of the thyroid gland. And so, what we have to ask today with an epidemic of hypothyroidism, underactive thyroid gland, are some people who with normal thyroid activity, having their thyroid gland activity lowered because of the fluoride in our environment. But just how the fluoride and the iodine interact to affect the lowering of thyroid activity is complicated. It's not as simple as saying, well, fluoride interferes with the uptake of iodine into the gland. Doesn't seem to do that. Fluoride does not appear to interfere with the insertion of iodine into the tyrosine molecule to make the thyroid hormone. There's some other mechanism involved there. And one of the things which is of huge concern but neglected in U.S. research is that where you have borderline iodine deficiency, fluoride is horrible, very toxic. And if you look at one of those IQ studies, that was reviewed by Harvard, by the way, one of those IQ studies, they found a lowering of IQ at .88 parts per million compared to children at .3 parts per million. And it was a case of the fluoride striking at this low concentration because it was borderline iodine. So, it made the borderline iodine problem worse by having a little bit of fluoride there. And we have 12 million people in the United States with borderline iodine deficiency. They, in my view, should not be getting any fluoride from any source if it can be possibly avoided.
Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Connet, thank you for being here today. Appreciate your scientific approach to this and all the information for people like me who, not a scientist. We have to depend on experts and people who help us with this, which leads me to my question on the other perspective from which you brought to us today. Are there any organizations? I mean, my understanding is the Center for Disease Control and the American Dental Association and the Academy of Pediatrics, the Academy of Family Medicine, the Mayo Clinic, all those folks are supportive of fluoridation. So, layman like me, it's a little confusing.
It is confusing.
So, do you know any medical organizations or agencies that like that, who would adopt your perspective on this? Or are they all on the other side of the line?
No, I think you could look at the medical organizations in the vast majority of countries worldwide, including most.
I just meant the United States.
Well, I mean, Germany, France, Belgium, Scandinavia, they all have those same bodies. They all have that same expertise. They looked at the same information that the U.S. authorities are looking at and endorsing fluoridation. They looked at the same information, and they have rejected fluoridation. So, I think you should look at all those bodies. But certainly, but more specifically, the National Kidney Foundation has recently removed its support for fluoridation because of concerns that the kidney, that somebody with impaired kidney function cannot get rid of all the fluoride that they take in each day, like a normal person. And there is some evidence that fluoride also damages the kidney. We also have a growing number of dentists who've broken away from the American Dental Association. One example is the International Academy of Oral Medicine and Toxicology. And they, as a body, are opposed to fluoridation. Now, I would also like to put this, your argument in historical perspective.
I didn't have an argument.
Well, okay, the experience then. You said all these organizations endorse fluoridation and why. I want to explain why. In 1950, the U.S. government, the U.S. Public Health Service endorsed fluoridation, which was an extraordinary event because in 1950, none of the trials of effectiveness had been completed. And there was practically no health data published in the scientific literature. So, it was a very strange decision in 1950 that they endorsed it. But what is also interesting is that nearly all those organizations that you're talking about, American Dental Association, American Medical Association, American Public Health Association, followed my leader. And they all endorsed fluoridation, still with no trials completed, still with no health data on the table. So, endorsements you have to take with a pinch of salt. Endorsements, it's not like selling shoes here. It's not like getting Nike, somebody going out there and promoting Nike shoes. We're talking about a serious public health policy here. And we should be looking at the scientific data. If the AMA supports fluoridation, where is their review? Where is the scientifically based review which has reached that position? Or did they just feel comfortable endorsing it because the Center of Disease Control endorsed it? And so on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rand, is that all?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Rand, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Connet, for being here. I greatly appreciate this. I have a question. I've been told that fluoride is absorbed by the skin. I'd like you to comment on that. Is that correct? And if it is, is it at a rate that could be problematic or add to the problem?
The science on that is not really in. I think there have been a few studies, but we haven't had the definitive study yet. And yet, it should be relatively straightforward. You put someone in a bath, draw blood from them before the bath, and then draw blood at every five minutes and see if the fluoride goes up in the blood. My gut feeling is that if you soak in a hot bath, your pores will open. Fluoride will not pass through the skin. From cold water, it's, the skin is fat, essentially, and the fluoride won't go through that cutaneous layer. But in a hot bath, those pores can open, and that's when the minerals in the water can enter the bloodstream. So, my gut feeling is that this would be a source of fluoride. But incredibly, after 65 years, there's no been, no solid scientific research to establish that that is the case.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skelton.
Doctor, is fluoride classified as a metal on the periodic table?
No, it's a non-metal.
It's a non?
A non-metal. For those who are puzzled by what this is, most people know the difference between metals and non-metal. Metals tend to be shiny and conduct electricity, et cetera. Non-metals tend to be brittle and don't conduct electricity. But the fundamental difference between a metal atom and a non-metal atom is metal atoms want to get rid of electrons and non-metal atoms want to gain electrons.
With that being said, sir, I want you to know I'm qualified to teach lead safe work practices for the state of Kansas.
Yes, 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 yes.
So, I'm telling you that the effects of fluoride poisoning sound a lot like lead poisoning. The fact that, you know, learning disabilities.
Yes.
And interference with neurotransmitters at synaptic gaps. It substitutes, your body can substitute fluoride as it can for, with lead for calcium?
No, okay.
Is that what you were saying?
No, 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 no. You're on the right track here, absolutely on the right track. My first issue of interest in environmental health was lead poisoning back in the '70s.
Well, and it's not only gasoline, it's paint.
Yes, it's paint. Yeah. And in those days, the argument was between those scientists who said overt lead poisoning caused brain damage, and that's the problem. And there were other scientists who said, well, if overt, if high exposure to lead caused brain damage sufficient to get parents to bring their kids to hospitals and clinics, what about lower levels of lead? What about very low levels of lead, which don't cause obvious symptoms? Could that be damaging the children's brains? And that was resolved in 1979 by Herbert Needleman, who showed that very low levels of lead did cause mental development problems, lack of concentration, et cetera. And when I started fluoride in 1996, it struck me, just like you, that there was a very distinct parallel between lead's effect on the brain and fluoride's effect on the brain. Now, as far as what happens to it, most of the fluoride, when you absorb it and digest it, will get stored in the bone. The bone is like a place to deposit things that you don't want. So, lead goes into the bone. Also, lead tends to follow calcium. So, that's another reason that lead would go into the bone, because that's where calcium is. Fluoride has a great affinity for calcium. And this is a way, let me back off. When you take fluoride into your system, the kidney does its best to get rid of it. The kidney excretes about 50% of the fluoride that we take in each day. Hence, the problem with people with impaired kidney function. The rest of the fluoride will fairly quickly settle down in the hard tissues, in the bone, in the teeth, and in the pineal gland, which also is a calcifying tissue. So, yes, there are interesting parallels between lead and fluoride, even though lead is a metal and fluoride is a non-metal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other lights. Dr. Connet, thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Item L-
Item L, request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding fluoridation.
And Dr. Bergstaller.
Thank you, Chairman Norton, members of the Commission. I'll be very quick with this. First of all, I'm Albert Bergstaller, retired professor of chemistry at the University of Kansas. I came there in the middle '50s, thinking fluoridation was fine, didn't worry about it. And then gradually, I began to develop a great deal of tiredness, went to my physician. After a few years, he said, you better check your thyroid. It turned out to be quite negative. And I said, what's causing this? Well, I don't know. So I was doing my research with making fluorinated amino acids and so forth. Gradually came across a report that four to five milligrams a day of fluoride for some people would cause a depression of thyroid function. This is work reported by Gordon Offenminder in Switzerland. So I said, what the heck, I'll just switch it to still water and see what happens. I was stunned at how quickly many of these symptoms disappeared. Waking up with a parched throat stop, finding that my joints were no longer painful, waking up with more energy. It was just amazing to me. So after three months not taking the thyroid extract, I went back to my physician, and he checked my metabolism, it was right at zero. But he did not say, he agreed that fluoride was necessarily doing it, but he was not surprised. During that time, I also got acquainted with Dr. George Walbot, an allergist in Detroit, reading his research on reversible ill effects of fluoride. Got organized with him in the Journal of Fluoride Research here. We've been publishing it since 1968. And in my research in that journal as editor, I found a great deal of material from the scientific world, from all over the world, as Dr. Connet has pointed out. Now, I did some research myself on the correlation of Down Syndrome among younger women in fluoridated areas. And that's quite an extensive study based on data from the US Public Health Service. I also looked at the connection between fluoride and cancer in different ways. That, of course, has developed into a problem with the arsteosarcoma in young men is related to fluoride. I also did some studies on fluoride levels in California wines and found that some of them were excessive because they were using cryolates, sodium aluminum fluoride as an insecticide. And those wines are not permitted to go to export if they're above 1 part per million. I would also add a couple of points here. And that is the question of the study of dentifluses. This has been raised here, is fluoride dentifluse very effective? Well, in Holland some years ago, they took two groups of children, oh dear. I'll make this very quick. They found that the children on the fluoride dentifluses and the non-fluoridentifluses, after about five years, both of the same eating habits, candy eating habits, same socioeconomic level, had no difference in tooth decay. So they could not prove any effectiveness for fluoridated dentifluses. As far as the necessity for fluoride, a very careful study by a London dental group showed that when they put a mice on a chlorella diet with a very low fluoride, .01 parts per million, that was enough to not only make them very healthy, reproduce perfectly with no problems of stillbirth, but live excessively long. They couldn't believe how long these mice were living. Five, six years was normally with a laboratory diet with some fluoride and other things. They had a perfect diet nutritionally, and the fluoride was not hurting. In fact, the diet showed that fluoride certainly was not essential. That's really all I would care to say, except thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you.
Before you go, Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bergstaller. Appreciate you coming down from Lawrence this morning to be with us and provide some points. I would have been happy to recommend, as an expert and PhD, to give you a little bit more time if there was additional points to make. The question I'd like to throw out to you is a variation of what I asked Dr. Connet. I've been told by a number of folks here in this community that it's not possible to get an adequate amount of fluoride by using a fluoridated toothpaste on your teeth, that that's not possible at all. I was curious if you had any opinion on that, one way or the other.
Well, yes, I do, in the sense that fluoridated toothpaste, although it doesn't seem like a lot if it's not swallowed, certainly children swallow a great deal, so they're getting much of it from that. The levels of fluoride in our diet, even in a non-fluoridated city, with the food and from the beverages, certainly puts into what is considered to be an adequate level of fluoride. The extra amount from the fluoridated toothpaste could hardly make any difference. But I would say this about fluoride in the teeth. Studies in Denmark showed that only a trace amounts of fluoride would be necessary to help promote remineralization if adequate amounts of calcium and phosphate are in the saliva. So the fluoride role there is more of a catalytic one than necessarily a beneficial. Furthermore, any fluorapatite formed in the teeth is an abnormal form of enamel, and that is, of course, something we would rather not have. We'd rather have a good, normal hydroxyapatite enamel formed. I'm also mentioned that I've been co-author of this book, Fluoridation: The Great Dilemma, which was a great delight to work on back in the 1970s. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Bergstaller, a question I'm going to throw out to you and follow up on Commissioner Skelton's earlier question to Dr. Connet. He talked about lead and the similarities with some of the problems from lead exposure with also exposure to fluoride. I was curious, because there's a whole host of naturally occurring elements, I'm thinking of cadmium, I'm thinking also of arsenic, for instance. And some of this is, if I brought my book on elements here with us today, and I thought about it, frankly, I forgot, almost every one of the basic elements that are on the periodic table, except for the most recent man-made ones that are at the bottom of the table, are part of our environment overall. And I was curious, because we have gone to major efforts, for instance, to keep cadmium a metal out of our environment, just like we have with lead more recently. And arsenic too, obviously, is problematical. But these are naturally occurring elements, and some of the heavy metals, mercury toxicity is another one in terms of it. And I was curious in terms of your opinion on the background levels and how fluoride compares with some of these other elements that exist, albeit often in trace amounts, on this planet.
Well, normally, humans would be drinking surface water from unpolluted lakes and unpolluted rivers. When we start digging wells, we bring in all these extra elements that are not normally present in surface water, such as fluoride. And as I think Dr. Connet mentioned, 1/10 of a part per million, looked back at 1938-39 by the American Water Works Association, was considered to be the maximum that they would like to see in a water supply. As far as lead goes, I want to tell you something very quickly. I visited Caltech some years ago and met Clara Patterson, who was doing some high sensitivity studies on lead levels in bones, going back to the pre-revolutionary period, pre-industrial period of the world. And he found that the levels were very low, except where there was lead pewter in the drinking cups and so forth. But when they looked at this increase with the industrial revolution, the levels went to pretty high levels that compared to what they were claiming were safe levels from the Kettering Laboratory. The Kettering Laboratory controls, on the other hand, were taken from the Mexican Indians eating off of lead-glazed pottery. So the control was useless. And that is what's so important about doing good science, and they know exactly what you're looking at, make sure your controls are correct. I'll make one final point. When I taught chemistry, I was hoping that the students would understand the importance of using scientific approach to whatever they do. When they go into professional fields, it seems like some of that sort of swept aside, as Dr. Connet has pointed out. And then we get this following of a mainline thinking without really doing what they should be doing, continuing the training in science and scientific approach. I hate to take more of your time, but that's what I would really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, doctor. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to open it up for anyone else that might want to speak. We're going to, I would like to try to limit it to new information, and we know we've had this before, so that we don't want to continue to repeat. And if you have spoken in a previous meeting, if you would keep your remarks very quick so we can move on to other county business. I don't want to make this whole day a forum on fluoridation yes or fluoridation no. But we've offered up to the public a chance to come. So if you would queue and give your name and address.
I'm Dr. Charles Henshaw. My address is 1320 Perth Court, Wichita, Kansas. Mr. Peter John, I'm not sure that you really got your question answered. Were you trying to say, do we need fluoridated water as well as fluoridated toothpaste?
No.
Okay, I thought you were, because there are studies that show that adding fluoridated water does not enhance the anticareogenic effect of the toothpaste. You do not need the water.
My point had been strictly that we'd been told by staff that it's impossible to get enough, you cannot get the topical, you cannot get the proper level of fluoride just by using toothpaste.
Well, see, that's when they say, that's why you've got to have fluoridated water.
That was the argument.
And the studies show that that's not correct.
Okay.
Before we move on, how many other people would like to speak before we finish up? Okay?
Okay, so we got three out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Zella Newberry, and I just had, I'm Zella Newberry, and I wanted to add, did you know that our Head Start children, our poor children, get a capsule every day of fluoride? I was there, I saw it, and I asked.
Question, Zella. Do you happen to have any idea how much fluoride was in the capsules that were being given to the kids?
To be hon, I had gone there to read. And when I saw this, I was aghast. And I'm sorry, I was so shocked, I didn't ask, but I could do that. Because one of the things that they say is that for our poor children, we need fluoride in our water, where our very poor children are getting a capsule every day. And I did, a friend of mine said, she had a friend who wanted to put her children in Head Start, but she could not if she gave, if she did not give permission for the fluoride that was given every day to our small children.
My name is James Gregg, 1835, North Holland Lane, Wichita, Kansas. There's just one point I'd like to bring up about the issue on what types of fluoride? We've been pressing the pro-fluoride people on this issue. What do they intend to put into our water? It is not pharmaceutical-grade fluoride of any kind. Sodium fluoride is the only one that's ever been tested. Hydrofluoric acid is the one that's generally used to fluoridate water because it's the cheapest available source. It's never been tested. Some of you know about the issue with coal and the pollutions from coal and how we have to put wet scrubbers in our coal plants. My father worked at a coal plant in Lawrence, and I'm familiar with that a little bit. The hydrofluoric acid comes from the wet scrubbers of phosphate plants. It's not refined in any way. There's more than just a fluoride compound, a man-made compound. It also contains lead, mercury, cadmium, arsenic, as a result of just a simple smoke. These are all collected in the slurry from which the hydrofluoric acid comes from. Now arsenic is a known carcinogen, and is not allowable in our food sources, and I include water as part of a natural food source, in any amounts. So if they propose to use hydrofluoric acid, gentlemen, as representatives of the county and as the principal body for the health of the county, we have to assure the people that arsenic will not be in our water in any amounts. Thank you, sir.
And I saw one other lady.
He just covered what I wanted to say.
Okay, well, that would be our last speaker then, for people that raised their hands. I appreciate everybody being here today, being civil and remaining composed as we went through this very important conversation in our community. We thank you for being here today. We are going to take, we need to receive and file.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll make that motion that we receive and file all the comments today. I particularly appreciate the folks who traveled long distance to be here and glad to have this dialogue this morning. And appreciate everyone's patience with my questions.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransau.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Chairman Norton.
Aye. And at this point, we'll take a 10-minute recess, be back here at 10 minutes till 11:00.